... tonight's City Council meeting of October 16, 2023 to order and ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Brennan.
Here.
Erby.
Here.
Doiter.
Here.
Burimas.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Schenck.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Hayhill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Castito.
Here.
Odean.
Here.
14 present, zero absent.
14 present, zero absent, we have a quorum. We have a couple of presentations this evening. The first one is recognition of the Elmers Team USA volleyball players Eva Feldudo and Illinois Catholic Prep, of Illinois Catholic Prep, and Abby Vanderwall from Timothy Christian School. So I'm going to ask...
Immaculate conception?
Immaculate conception.
Did I say...
He said Ellen.
I'm sorry, immaculate conception. I'm not going to start over, but you know who we are. All right. So I would ask if the coach and Ms. Feldudo and Ms. Vanderwall will join me over at the podium over there. We have some, I'd like to introduce you and have some comments.
Good evening. My name is Jack Legrand. I'm the athletic director at Timothy Christian.
All right, Jack Legrand, who's the A.D., is going to take the program from here.
We want to thank you for having us this evening. Mr. Burton Shaw, the A.D., IC Catholic Prep, and myself, as well as all our families, had the pleasure of watching these young ladies compete for Team USA this year in the summer, and it was very exciting. As the A.D., watching them compete against each other for many years in high school, watching them play together on club volleyball together, watching them work super, super hard and excel, and then to see them as teammates this summer was just a joy for all of us. And to see how they competed at such a high level at the, for Team USA, and we just thought it was amazing that two girls from schools just a mile or two apart are both competing for Team USA from Elmhurst and earning gold medals doing that for Team USA. And it was just super exciting, and we can't thank you enough for this opportunity to take a few minutes during your busy time to recognize these young ladies for all the time and efforts that they've put in. Girls, well done, and we're very, very proud of you. Congratulations.
Well, it wouldn't be an honor without a proclamation, now would it? So let me, I have two proclamations, I'd like to read them. Whereas Eva Feldudo is a member of the IC, Immaculate Conception Catholic Prep, where she has played on the varsity volleyball team since freshman year, has been a captain for two years, and whereas Eva started playing volleyball at the age of eight years old, and where she's a multi-year participant in the USA Volleyball National Team Development Program, and in May 2023, she was invited to participate in the USA Volleyball Girls U-19 National Team in libero. And whereas as part of the U-19 National Team, Eva helped her team win gold at the Pan Am Cup in Puerto Rico in May 2023. It was named the best receiver in the Pan Am Cup. And whereas in August 2023, Eva won gold again with the U-19 National Team as the libero defensive specialist at the, it looks like FIV-8 U-19 World Championship in Croatia, and where Eva was selected to play on the U.S. Volleyball Women's U-21 National Team for the FIVB World Championship in Mexico, where the team took sixth place, and where Eva was ranked at the top libero in Illinois by Prep Digg, and was selected as one of the 26 seniors nationwide to participate as the Under Armour Next All-American Game Player in Florida in January 2024. Whereas Eva's determination, drive, and countless hours of practice have earned her a spot on the Penn State University volleyball team, where she will join her new team and begin her studies in January 2024. Now, therefore, I, Scott M. Levin, Mayor of the City of Elmers, with great pride congratulate Eva Feldudo on her many accomplishments throughout her volleyball career, and do hereby proclaim October 16, 2023, as Eva Feldudo Day. Your passport probably needs a lot of pages to be added to it. All right. All right. And now we have Abby Vanderwall. Whereas Abby Vanderwall is a junior at Timothy Christian High School, where she has played on the varsity volleyball teams, teams since freshman year. And whereas Abby's passion for volleyball began when she was eight years old with the one, First Alliance Lions, it looks like juniors volleyball club. And whereas in Abby's 14U, 15U, and 16U seasons, her club was rated as one of the top five teams in the nation, and where she's been part of the National Team Development Program since the fall of 2021. And in February 2023, she was invited to participate in the USA Volleyball Girls U-19 National Team. Whereas as part of the U-19 National Team, Abby helped her team win gold at both the Pan Am Cup in Puerto Rico in May 2023 and at the FIVB U-19 World Championship in Croatia in August 2023, where despite being the youngest member on the team, she was named the best outside hitter and MVP of the tournament. Second that. And whereas Abby was selected to play on the USA Volleyball Women's U-21 National Team for the FIVB World Championship in Mexico in August 2023, where the team took sixth place. And whereas Abby's determination, drive, and countless hours of practice have contributed to her success, now therefore I, Scott M. Levin, Mayor of the City of Elmhurst, with great pride congratulate Abby Vanderwall on her many accomplishments throughout her volleyball career, and do hereby proclaim October 16, 2023, as Abby Vanderwall Day. And I think, no, we're not good yet, because I know our council members always like to congratulate championship players such as yourself. I will hold this for you, and if you will walk around the dais right here, watch your step and be congratulated.
Congratulations.
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 Good job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
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 Congrats.
Something high.
Congratulations.
So we're going to move on to the next part of the program, which may be very exciting for the high schoolers here, or if you want to take leave, you may do that now, but we have a oath of office for promotion to sergeant, which we're going to move on to. Alex.
You told me to.
There you are.
I think I'm stopping what's going on in life.
Who's going to pin it on?
I'm going to cut again.
All right, we're going to go up here. Do we have any kind of...
I have something.
All right. Well, very good event for us tonight. I'm glad that so many of your fellow officers have joined us this evening. This is always one of the great pleasures for the City Council when we have a new police officer promotion. Officer Kepelukas has completed 15 years of service with the Elmers Police Department, has been assigned as a patrol officer and a mission team officer. He has held several specialty assignments within the department, including field training officer, juvenile officer, dare officer, bike officer, citizens' police academy coordinator, and tactical patrol officer team leader. Officer Kepelukas is also a member of the DuPage Merit Major Crash Investigation Team, where he serves as a drug recognition expert. Officer Kepelukas holds a bachelor's degree in administration from Elmhurst University and is assigned to the Patrol Division. And I've had the great pleasure of spending many times talking with him, so it's my pleasure to do this promotion. Would you like to invite your family to come up and join us? Bring them all up. If you guys just want to come along the back here.
Ah, we're talking.
We like it.
Somebody can come over here.
That's spectacular.
Anybody else? All right. All right, do you want to, one more? All right. You want to tell us who you have with you tonight?
Yes. So this is my wife Katie in green, my daughter Miley, my son Xander, my daughter Penelope, my daughter Fiona, my niece Ariana, my father Mike, my mom Penny, my father-in-law Brett, my mother-in-law Kim, my sister Christina, my brother John, and my brother-in-law Hans with his, and then, yes, sorry, and then my soon-to-be sister-in-law Stephanie, and then some friends.
All right. We're ready to proceed. I'll ask you to hold this.
I, Alex Kepelukas.
I, Alex Kepelukas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Chartered Laws.
And the Chartered Laws.
Of the City of Elmers.
Of the City of Elmers.
And I will perform the duties.
And I will perform the duties.
Of police sergeant.
Of police sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
you can all be seen, and I'm going to step out and it'll be just the family. Witness protection program, I know. Just come on up here. behind you, so if you come up and jump in behind the new sergeant. Might have to start in the three rows here, three levels.
Should we get some people in the front here?
I just don't want to be in the picture.
You can stand on my shoulders.
I don't, I, from Friday, I thought they were.
I can't see them.
I brought them each other.
I guess I can, that'd be out. I got everybody in.
They're not there.
Can everybody see me? I can't see you.
Let me go back really quick to meetings, too, to make sure they're at least tagged. I'm not locked down yet. I'm just going back to meetings. I mean, the minutes are on the meeting, there's not released, I mean, not been signed.
All right.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Well, I went to the special meeting October 10. Congrats. No, it's not, I'm sorry. Congratulations to you. October 10. I'm just, I'm not locked in. I'm at, every minute. I'm just going to release it. I guess it was never...
We're on item 3.3, Illinois Tollway Authority Construction Update, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight we have a presentation from the Illinois Tollway regarding the ongoing construction. I was chatting with Mr. Nasif, who we met 12 years ago, and we both kind of started working on this. And so with us tonight is Mr. Minar Nasif with the Tollway, Mr. John Sadler with Trans Systems, Jill Ziegler with the Tollway Planning, and I think I saw Shannon Armstrong sneak in. So for those of you who wards border that, you'll know that Shannon is our go-to person when we have issues, when the neighbors are calling and something's happened. Trans Systems is the group that's been able to help us out. But without further to do, I would turn it over to the Tollway for the presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks, Jim. Thanks, City Council for giving us, Mayor and the City Council for giving us some time tonight at your meeting to give you an update on all the good things the Tollway is doing in and around Elmhurst. I'm not sure how I'm supposed to follow that, though. That is great news, I mean, the volleyball team, and then, of course, the police swearing in, so that was, it's good stuff. I've never felt more safe in my life. So I'm going to give, let's see if this works. Yeah, I'm just going to give a quick corridor overview of the Central Tri-State project, and this is a massive project that the Tollway is doing as part of our 15-year, $14 billion Move Illinois program. Talk about some of the accomplishments. We have made a lot of progress and completed a lot of the work on the project. Give you a construction update with respect to what we're doing this year, the remainder this year, and then into next year, and then some of the improvements in and around Elmhurst specifically. So just the corridor overview. So this is, it's a massive project. This is one of the two biggest in our capital program. So this is a $4 billion project in our 15-year program. It spans the, the length of the project is 22 miles, spanning from 95th Street in the Bridgeview area all the way up to Balmoral Avenue in the Rosemont area. So it's just, it's just a massive project. And this, this improvement is being done on the tri-state, and the tri-state for the Tollway is the bread and butter of the Tollway. It carries the most traffic, more than 300,000 vehicles a day travel through this, through this stretch of the tri-state, carries the most truck traffic, and I'm sure, you know, many of you have noticed that, but up to 15% of all the traffic is truck traffic. And then it just serves as a vital regional connector for this region. This corridor, believe it or not, was built as part of the overall original construction of the Tollway way back in the 1950s. It was widened to the inside to add a lane back in 93, but as it stands now, really, that roadway has reached the end of its useful life, and so it was time for an improvement to be done. But what we did, rather than just looking at just replacing what was there, we looked to make operational improvements to this project. So it wasn't just a removal and a reconstruction, it was more of looking at the operational issues that we have on the corridor from a traffic perspective, engaging with communities. Is that for me? I'll pretend it is. But, you know, so not only looking at the infrastructure and the traffic, but also looking at things like drainage and new access. So we looked, we took a holistic view of this, engaged stakeholders within the project area to really arrive at the project that we're building today. And as I said, this is a $4 billion investment, and really, this is part of a massive investment, not only in this project, but some of the other projects in the Move Illinois program in this region. So, you know, if we combine it with our new 490 corridor, which is right here, the new Tollway that we're building from Grand, from the Grand Avenue area up and around O'Hare and connecting with I-90, that's another $4 billion project, and then we built the I-90 roadway improvement here, which was a $2 billion project. So $10 billion worth of improvements by the Tollway right here around O'Hare. And then if you combine that with what O'Hare's doing, what the state is doing, it's just, it's a great investment in this region. So as I said, you know, we have accomplished a lot thus far. So we started construction early. This project wasn't slated to begin until 2022. Our board and our, our board at the time made the proactive decision to advance this work and get out on the street back in 2018. So we started construction on the far northern end, started advanced work up and down the corridor to enable us to do what we're doing today, and that really has benefited this project, not only to deliver improvements earlier, but also we got ahead of everything that occurred last year. And so as, you know, we all know, there was inflation that hit the market, and we were able to stay ahead of that and really, really just deliver these improvements at the lowest possible cost and ahead of schedule. So just some of the highlights of what has been completed to date. I'll just focus on a couple of segments. The first is the Cermac Avenue to St. Charles Road segment of I-294. So we have completed construction here. Some of those improvements are listed here in the first set of bullet points. The St. Charles Road Interchange, this is where St. Charles Road connects with I-290 and crosses over I-294. So we recently completed the work on the bridge replacement. The northbound collector-distributor road, that's essentially, it's a glorified term for a ramp down at the 290 and 88 interchange, and I'll show a picture of that here in a moment, but that was completed as advanced work at that I-290-I-88 interchange that suffers from severe congestion on a daily basis. And then we finished up a new ramp that connects the southbound tri-state to westbound 88 and eastbound I-290. So if you've traveled southbound on 294, you would, you have no doubt seen that we are in a different configuration there than we were maybe a couple months ago now, or a month ago now. So that's what we've completed. Right now, we're working on the northbound construction from Cermac to St. Charles, and then in the future, we'll flip it over and work on the southbound side. Now moving north, St. Charles Road to Balmoral Avenue. So what has been completed there, we opened new lanes from the O'Hare Oasis, that's up in the Shiller Park area, all the way up to Balmoral Avenue in the Rosemont area. We've completed the rehabilitation of the Bensonville Yard Bridge. That's the massive bridge located just north of Grand Avenue and over the Canadian Pacific Railway Intermodal Yard. So that's just a huge, it's a huge bridge, and we were able to get out ahead and complete those improvements. Southbound pavement from Wolf Road to North Avenue. So all of the traffic through there is traveling on new pavement, no potholes to worry about over the winter, so we're happy about the progress being made there. That's about a three-mile stretch. And then the ramp from westbound 290 to Lake Street, that was completed. Current construction, working on the northbound lanes between North Avenue and Wolf, and then the southbound lanes between North Avenue and St. Charles Road. So just some, some updates here on what we're going to be doing the remainder of the year and then next year in this area. So with work, we've completed most of the work, as I said, on the north end in that pink area right here. We've also completed a lot of work on the south end, so really, our focus is squarely on this middle section in that area, the yellow and the blue section. So that's the I-55 to Cermac Road. We're doing more work at the I-290 and 88 interchange, St. Charles Road to Wolf Road I mentioned, the 294 and 490 interchange. I-490 is that new Tollway I mentioned that's going to be constructed, connecting with 294 in the south in the Elmhurst area, and then up to Bent, up to the Displanes area on I-90. So that'll be a new Tollway built around the west side of O'Hare, will provide western access to O'Hare. That's central to that project. But we're working, in this area, we're working where that green little dot there is, that's the new interchange, and if you've driven through there, it's by the Baby Ruth sign, if you've seen that, everyone knows where that is. You'll see there's new ramps coming in overhead, and that's going to connect 294 to this new Tollway. And then the 294 North Avenue interchange, and I'll, I have a couple slides to just show that at the end. So just, this is some progress photos, we all like pictures, so just some of the progress for the work that has been completed in the Elmhurst area. So we've, we've worked with the city on incorporating where we can some branding, local agency branding, so that's an example of that. It really enhances the look of the corridor, it's not just, you know, this plain, plain old roadway improvement. And then the 290 interchange, so this is the bridge over 290, this is I-290, and we have the full ramp work there. And then on that bridge, providing for pedestrian access. So it's not just about moving cars, it's also about moving and ensuring that other modes of travel are accommodated. And then these are some, some improvements here at Butterfield Road, you can see there's bridge construction, and then this is the I-290-88 interchange, some of the active work there. Couple of other pictures, so this is a good shot of work at the I-290-I-88 interchange, and this is a picture looking north at the interchange from just south of I-88. So this is I-88 here, this is the southbound 294, this is that collector-distributor look going northbound that I mentioned. So we've been able to, by doing that work early, we've been able to move traffic out onto that ramp, and that has allowed us to continue to move traffic through this interchange while it's under construction. So that's a conscious effort the Tollway has made, we're not shutting effort the tollway has made. We're not shutting down the whole tri-state. We're not reducing it to two or three lanes. We're maintaining traffic through this interchange, and this is very highly congested. And you can see in this picture, all the trucks that are traveling through here. So, you know, what's key for us is continuing to move that truck traffic, all that traffic through there while it's under construction. But this is a massively complex interchange. It's three levels, so we have ramps coming on from I-88. We have I-88 itself. We have ramps coming from 2, from 290 to 294 or 88, and then we have 294 And this is another, just another picture, looking back in the other direction. So again, you can just see all of the, the traffic. This shows the bridge work we're doing. So still maintaining traffic through this area, but we're building these bridge piers or supports, and then we'll be building the bridge on top of that and then moving traffic around in the interchange. So just some of the benefits, you know, in, in the city of Elmhurst, addressing the congestion, the 290-88 interchange, new access at North Avenue, and I'll just touch on that here just at the end. Drainage improvements, so it's not just about the roadway, as I said, but it's also about drainage. You know, there are drainage issues up and down this corridor, and so we're trying to address those by building a lot more storage to hold back that stormwater and then release it over time when the storm is over and, and the, you know, the, the system can, can handle it. So that's a big, that's a big part of this project as well. And then noise abatement walls. We are constructing up and down the corridor, noise abatement walls to mitigate against noise and the additional lanes that we're building. And then this is just another slide, kind of showing one of the locations where we're doing some drainage work. And this is a long I-294, so northbound I-294 is right here. And then this is I-88 heading towards the city. And we're building a large detention basin here. That's an example of one of those stormwater improvements. So just want to touch on, just the final few slides here. Just want to touch on what we're doing at the tri-state and County Line Road, North Avenue. So this is a project, and we want to thank, sincerely thank the city of Elmhurst, who partnered with us early on, and that was the project Jim was mentioning. This is the project where we first met, I think, when we were working on this early on. But yeah, we, we partnered with the city of Elmhurst, also Northlake, to get the design rolling on this interchange. So this was a problem area for years. There was a lot of out-of-direction travel that occurs because there's not a way to get to eastbound North Avenue, and that does directly impact Elmhurst. And so what we're doing through this project is, so we have County Line Road flanks the tri-state on the west side. This is the tri-state, and then the 290 interchange. There's a ramp from southbound 290 to westbound, um, southbound 294 to westbound 290. And what, so we are building a, a ramp, a new exit ramp that will exit to County Line Road right by McMaster Car. And then we're building complementary improvements at the south where Lake Street and North Avenue connect. So whereas traffic, and then we're providing a connection to eastbound North Avenue. So right now, traffic headed for eastbound North Avenue undoubtedly exits to 290 West, then does an immediate loop to westbound North Avenue, and then turns around in someone's driveway, and then goes back. So, you know, right on Berto.
In the fourth word.
Yeah, right, right.
Third word, yeah.
So, yeah, so it's a direct impact. So what we are looking to do through this interchange project is, again, yeah, build that new exit ramp and then allow for traffic to directly turn left down at County Line Road and Lake Street and then head east from there. So all that, all that traffic destined east is contained right there on the tri-state. So, you know, it, it's really gonna improve the out-of-direction travel that, that occurs there. So that's that. And so we're expecting construction to continue through 2025 on this project. These are some pictures of that work in progress. So at the top, we have the tri-state. This is looking north, and, and you can see there's a crane there, and we're doing a lot of work there. And North Avenue is underneath. So here, there are two level, three levels to this area. North Avenue is the base level. We have a Lake Street Bridge that goes over North Avenue, and the tri-state's up and over top of that. So it's a very confined area, very difficult to construct within, but we're finding a way to get it done. So the other pictures here, this is County Line Road. So we are realigning County Line Road in front of McMaster Car there to accommodate that new ramp that's gonna exit and tee into County Line Road. And I do want to say, you know, we've enjoyed a great relationship with McMaster Car. We've been coordinating with them closely throughout this project. We do have, you know, they've been, you know, we've just been communicating with them regularly and keeping them up to date, and, you know, we, we do know that it's the largest employer in the city of Elmhurst, and we, you know, we respect that. And I think by keeping them up to date and allowing them to plan their improvements, you know, I think it's allowed for a win-win in this area. And I've actually gotten a tour of their expansion with that team over there, so it's pretty exciting to see just all of this come together in this area. This is another shot, just a little more detail on the North Avenue-Lake Street area. So this is County Line Road, and the bridge that carries that second-level Lake Street over North Avenue is actually being widened, and that's what's gonna allow for that direct movement right here. So this, these arrows kind of show that in a little more detail. So we are working closely, trying to get that done as soon as we can. I'm just gonna end with a video showing, this is on the tollway website, but just showing the improvements we're making at the 290-88 interchange.
The I-88 interchange at I-294 is a critical section of roadway for the entire region, connecting the suburbs and city of Chicago with northeastern Illinois and beyond. Unfortunately, this specific interchange experiences the greatest amount of congestion of the entire tollway system and delays drivers every day as they travel through this choke point, impacting travelers, businesses, and local communities. Drivers come to a near stop on some segments of the roadway, causing extensive backups and creating safety concerns. As heavy freight trucks line up to merge onto I-290 from I-294 northbound, they are forced to dramatically reduce speeds in order to handle the tight curve of the ramp. Trucks then struggle to increase speeds as they are forced up a steep incline. The interchange experiences additional issues as drivers are forced to cut across heavy traffic to merge onto I-88. Overall, the issues related to the interchange-
Not fun.
... substantial backups in all directions, costing drivers and businesses lost time and money as motorists and commerce are stranded in traffic. Together with Illinois Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration, Cook County, and DuPage County, the tollway has studied alternative solutions to improve the interchange to relieve congestion and backups. Changes will improve ramp speeds and connections. Drivers will experience improved travel speeds. Improvements will reduce merging and allow drivers to move more freely through the interchange. As a region, we will work to improve this choke point so that commuters, travelers, and commerce can more efficiently travel through the region to their destination. For more information, visit illinoistollway.com.
Yeah, so that, that is on the tollway website. We also have it, a couple of other similar videos that kind of give different vantage points of what we're doing at the interchange. But really, that, that's the number-one operational hotspot on the tollway system, and that we were focused on making a priority to, to improve through this project. So we're very excited about moving it forward. It's, it's a major project in, in the project as overall, so. With that, again, I want to thank the city of Elmhurst, Jim, and Kent Johnson, the city engineer, for their cooperation. You know, it's been instrumental in us being able to, to make these projects happen within, within the city as they affect the city. So thanks for the time tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions here or come back with further updates, if you'd like.
I'm sure we would appreciate a future update, but if there are any questions while we're all here together tonight, Alderman Bostido.
Thank you for coming and taking the time to present on that. As you said, there were, you know, there's a big impact on Elmhurst, and I have noticed a lot of the improvements that have already taken place that you mentioned, so thank you. I have two questions. One is northbound 294, the entrance to South Elmhurst has been affected by westbound Roosevelt being closed. So I think I, last time I was on, it was maybe a week or two ago, but I'm assuming it's still closed. Do you know when that's gonna be open?
Yeah, Jim, or, sorry, Jim. John Sadlers, our corridor construction manager. So maybe if you want to take that.
That ramp to westbound Roosevelt, that's gonna be opening here probably by the end of October. On that will be followed by another ramp closure, it'll be the 290 ramp from 294 northbound to eastbound 290. That's gonna close, and that's gonna have the door that's gonna go back through the St. Charles interchange. So if you wanted to go east on 290, you'd have to stay on 294 and take the ramp over to westbound 290. It's the St. Charles interchange, and that's gonna be for about four minutes.
Okay, thank you. And the other question was, you talked about the interchange to 490. When will 490 itself be complete?
So we are targeting a 2027 completion, working closely. It's a very complex project, having to work closely with the Chicago Department of Aviation, federal aviation, IDOT, federal highways on that. But yeah, we're making a lot of progress. We're doing a lot of the advanced work. It's kind of not really visible from the roadway because it's just west, it's just right on the doorstep of the airfield. So you can't really see it. You can kind of see, you can kind of get a glimpse of it if you travel up and down York Road in that area, but yeah, we're making a lot of progress. Anything you see, if you've been on Green Street, you see like a lot of activity and railroad, people in the railroad yard, that's us. We're doing some advanced work there to make, to provide a path for the 490 roadway to be built within.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you again for taking the time to come today.
Thank you.
Alderman Bram.
Thank you, and thank you for coming. I was excited to see this on the agenda tonight, especially for the off-ramp of County Line Road or going to County Line Road. One of the concerns I've expressed years ago when this was starting to be discussed was, in the meantime, until we actually have that ramp right going east onto North Avenue, in the meantime, I'm concerned with traffic driving down County Line Road and then making a right or going west to essentially end up in my neighborhoods along the cemeteries, and then you're in the residential area. What is being proposed to ensure that all that traffic coming off that ramp, going on County Line Road, does not end up going into the neighborhoods to the west there?
Yeah, I mean, that's something we're just, we're keeping an eye on. We're trying to, to expedite the construction. You know, at that south intersection, it's really the intersection of County Line Road and, and Lake Street.
Right.
We're, we're putting up signing to try to, you know, prohibit trucks from going that way. Yeah. It's, you know, it's only as good as the enforcement, but, you know, it's something that we're, I think the, the main thing we're trying to do is just knock that work out as quickly as possible. And I do remember those early meetings, I think, that I was in with you. And we, we just, we get the concern, and we want to just try to complete the work as soon as possible. We can only control driver behavior, you know, so much.
When is County Line Road opening, or the ramp for County Line Road opening?
So we are timing that. The ramp itself will be completed as early as the end of next year. But we are gonna time its opening with when those complementary improvements on the south are done. What we don't want to do is, so that date, you know, still TBD, but what we don't want to do is send more traffic down County Line Road, I mean, to your point.
Right.
Only to have them kind of not, not have a, a place to go, right? And then end up going west to Emroy and then-
Exactly.
Into your neighborhood, so yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we've already seen a lot of truck, truck, truck traffic as it is, so I'm glad to hear that you're coordinating both the off-ramp there along with the improvements for the, the ramps. Couple other questions, one of which you kind of touched on more about drainage than stormwater detention. Have we seen with these, these projects, especially in the Elmhurst area, hot topic for many years, if not over a decade now, of any stormwater detention increases in the area?
Through the project that we're building?
Through the project.
Yeah, we're building, we actually had a slide, but we, it was kind of too detailed. But we're actually building this 27 acre feet of storage at that North Avenue interchange, right in that immediate area.
27, which would have replaced?
Yeah, so in layman's terms, that's just a lot of storage. But that's new basins right in those infills. And then we're also, as part of that project, there's a massive storm sewer that's being pushed east to take all that stormwater from Elmhurst and push it to the Doyle Reservoir, which is located north, in Northlake. So that's really gonna improve just conveyance. So when these storms happen, really, a lot of times, right, we all know, North Avenue would hold water, so that would be standing water on North Avenue. So the goal of that project is not only the roadway, it's to move that water east and get it conveyed as quickly as possible. So there's a massive upsizing along with the detention in that area. So it's really, it's good improvement there.
Do you think that will improve the pseudo-stormwater detention on North Avenue there?
Yeah, no, that's what it's intended to do. I think, what, yeah, what happened is there is just, it had nowhere to go, or it was over, under capacity. So we've updated, that design's been updated based upon the new rainfall data that we have. So everyone knows, you know, weather patterns are changing, and, and really, our design is being informed by the new data we have, and it's, it's required by Illinois Department of Natural Resources.
Just two more questions, one being ramp closures. And I live this every day that I go to work. I have to make that decision as an example. Heading 294 north and wanting to go west on 290, hitting that ramp. Some days it's open, some days it's closed. Is there any, other than the website, which obviously, even though dynamic is relatively static, because you can't do day-to-day updates, any way that closure updates, how are closure updates communicated, I guess?
Yeah, so the long-term closures, we are, I think we're coordinating closely with the city, but we can work to, you know, if you're not hearing it, that, I mean, we don't, we want to put out messages that everybody gets. So maybe we'll work with Jim to see, you know, if there's something that's not getting to the right place. City manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we do receive daily updates from the, from the tollway and from Trans Systems, but we've mainly kept it as a public safety issue. We can certainly distribute those to the council if you're interested.
Sure.
They're lengthy and very detailed, I would tell you, which is great, and we'll, we'll share those.
Great, thank you. Last question, noise abatement walls. I know we discussed it the last time we met multiple years ago. What's the criteria for abatement walls to go in?
Yeah, so we have a noise policy. What we do during the, and it mirrors the federal highway policy. But what we do is there's a, a projection of what the noise, there's a noise study that's done, and what it, its intent, or what it accomplishes is it, it's a, it's a model that projects what the noise level is going to be after the construction is complete. And so there are, it estimates what the decibel levels are gonna be for the roadway noise, and then where there's an impact, and an impact is a certain decibel level, 67 decibels is defined as an impact. Then there's an analysis with respect to whether the wall is gonna be effective, is it feasible, you know, is it even constructable given constraints? That, those are the main criteria, feasible and effective. And then, and then we, we can build the walls. So what we're doing on this corridor is replacing the walls that existed before construction, and then there are a couple of new walls that are going in, including along 290. So 290 is not a tollway, but we haven't limited this project to just making the improvement on, on the tollway.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've all become so dependent upon technology. I'm just curious, it may be a naive question, but, you know, when you bring projects online, I mean, is, is there a central place that Google and Apple and everybody goes to to update the, the latest maps that they have? How does that work?
Yeah, I hear you on that. What we, unfortunately, what we rely, and we have, we make, we coordinate a lot with those groups, all those mapping, you know, companies, but they really still rely on reports from people that use them.
Crowdsourcing.
Yeah, so, you know, to the extent you can, just, you know, if it's not up to date, you know, put something in. But that's why we try to really flood the area with our messaging. Our tollway communications department tries to get the word out. Our tollway communications department tries to get the word out. But we have an entire GIS department that tries to maintain contact, tries to give those updates. But what really helps is just people sending in a comment, hey, this is wrong, you know. But I hear you. I mean, that's what people rely on these days, is their phone and their navigation system in their car.
Okay, thank you.
And Elmhurst News and Comment.
Absolutely, yeah.
Other questions? All right, thank you for coming out this evening to all of you. I know the council wanted to be updated, and people watching at home will find this is very valuable information. And we hope to have you come back and join us again sometime. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Onto item four, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there any member of the public who has a written communication that they would like to deliver to the council? If so, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we'll go on to public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed up for public forum to speak this evening?
No, Mayor.
Is there any member of the audience that did not have the opportunity to sign in for public forum but would like to address the council? There being none, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the dius this evening? All right, on to the consent agenda. I'm going to pull back on behalf of Clerk Tamer, items 7.1 and 7.2 for further review and revision. Are there any other items that, on the consent agenda, that any alderman would like to pull either to, for further discussion or to vote against? All right. With that, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to please read the consent agenda.
Do you want to read it first?
We could do it either way.
All right. 7.3 Accounts Payable, October 16th, 2023, 7.4 Report, Case Number 23PO9 Baja Auto Sales, Conditional Use Permit. 7.5 Report, Referral Code Enforcement Practices Update. 7.6 Report, Audit Services Renewal. 7.7 Report, Elmhurst Police Body Camera, In-Car Camera Purchase. 7.8 Report, Elmhurst Police Delta 8 and Delta 9 THCO Ordinance. 7.9 Report, Spring Road Business Association Holiday Event. 7.10 Report, Fourth Extended Memorandum of Understanding with FOP Lodge 81. 7.11 Report, Professional Engineering Services for the Water System Improvements Project. 7.12, An Ordinance Authorizing the Execution of a Residential Lease for the Premises Commonly Known as 1009 Riverside Drive, Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.13, An Ordinance Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Non-Exclusive License Agreement Buy-in Between Dan Gibbons Turkey Trap Foundation, NFP, and the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 7.14, An Ordinance Vacating the Alley Right-of-Way Directly Adjacent to 176 North Myrtle, Elmhurst, Illinois. 7.15, An Ordinance Authorizing a 12th Loan Modification Agreement for the City of Elmhurst, DuPage, and Cook Counties, Illinois. 7.16, A Resolution to Approve and Authorize the Execution of a Professional Engineering Services Agreement Buy-in Between Clark Deeds, Inc., and the City of Elmhurst for the 2023 through 2026 Water System Modeling and Lead Service Line Planning Project. 7.17, A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of Change Order Number 3 from the McKinley Stormwater Pump Station Rehabilitation Project. And 7.18, A Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Professional Services Agreement with Concentric Integration LLC for the integration of the Pump Control Panel and SCADA Panel for the Underpass Storm Station Improvement Project.
Now, you, Clerk Tamer, may have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 7.1 and 7.2. Alderman Hill with the motion, Alderman Bram with the second. Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Brennan.
Aye.
Erby.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Verimus.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Shenko.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Hayho.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Udara.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Nardini.
Aye.
14 i's, 0 n's.
14 i's, 0 n's. The consent agenda minus items 7.1 and 7.2 is approved. Onto reports and recommendations, Mayor, 11. Two, maybe. We're pleased to announce that the Elmhurst Police Department has been reaccredited for another four years through the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. And ILEEP representative will come to a November meeting for a presentation. So I want to congratulate Chief McLean and particularly Commander Mandette for all the work to achieve this. This is not, as you will hear more about later, not in a word that many Illinois police agencies receive. And I'm proud on behalf of the council that we are one receiving it. I personally wanted to say that there was some discussion at the last meeting, which I was chairing, regarding the Department, the Public Works Committee's approval of a vacation report. And I think I properly criticized the committee for their work when I think my comments should have been directed to the fact that although I did not agree with the result, I did not, should not have said that the committee got it wrong. I think we put a great deal of faith in our committee process, and I appreciate the work that all of our committees do. So thank you for that. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things tonight. Our newest museum exhibit is now open, Lost Chicagoland Department Stores. And Dave and his team have once again knocked it out of the park, as he would say. And if you haven't gotten over there, please do. We've gotten lots and lots of press coverage on it that Dave himself admits he never would have thought we would achieve. And so kudos to that team. And then, yes, the Lions Club Pumpkin Patch is open at Wild Meadows Trace, which is York and the Prairie Path. So please go there, buy your pumpkins for the fall. Thank you, Mayor.
City manager, any other reports from elected officials? All right, that brings us on to other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, Alderman Deuter. Second, Alderman Brennan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.